meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair saying none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public is adequately accessed at proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel eight and ten seventy-two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First action, I'm going to establish quorum. Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. I'm just going to give a quick rundown of tonight's agenda and make a couple of small little announcements also. We're going to start off with approval of minutes for April second, two thousand twenty-four, and April ninth of two thousand twenty-four. They will move into public announcements and agenda item requests. The public hearing on Consider General Bylaw Amendment Revised, Chapter one hundred, Airport Approach Zone Map, Chapter one hundred, Scrivener's Error Correction, and parentheses, not. Due to a posting error, we will not be opening that post-public hearing this evening. It has been re-posted and rescheduled for May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. So once again, the public hearing will not be take place this evening. Then we will go into public comments on our business agenda, which consists of the following, and I'm going to make one small edit, which I'll clarify in a moment. Item A, Consider Use of Sales on Town Property, Community Center, Castleberry Fairs. Item B, Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest, Request for an Exemption Determination from Barry Greco, Shellfish Advisory Committee. Item C, Housing Development for one five three three Main Street and Zero Meeting House Road, Consider Delegation of Project Responsibilities and Authority. This item, we are going to take public comment during the item, so not prior. I'm holding that one aside, and we're going to allow public comment during that particular item. Item D, Electric Vehicle or EV Public Charging Station Policy, and we will wrap up our evening with appointments to the Council and Aging Board of Directors, Affordable Housing Committee, and Conservation Committee. With all that being said, I will start with approval of minutes for April second, two thousand and twenty-four. Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Go here, second. Edits, corrections, Mike?
I have two apart from my knits on page nine, and I'm just bringing this one up because I'm reversing what this says from positive to negative. I'm pretty sure that Mr. Minor said that he couldn't find the answer, but he would look for it. And so I would change in the first line, "He can find" to "He cannot find," and then in the second line, "Change is being proposed," but he offered to get the information for the Select Board. And then on page eleven, this says, "Looking at the comments in the second lowest bidder, there was a little more confidence expressed by the board in choosing that bidder." I think that that encompasses the entire board. I certainly don't recall myself saying that, and I think there may have been others that expressed doubts, but not necessarily confidence to choose the second bidder. So I would change that to say, subject to the will of the group, expressed by certain members of the board in choosing that bidder.
That's fine. Okay, Dean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page, I have two. On page nine, the third full paragraph in the third line, after the phrase "The authority of the town," I would insert the word "not" because that's the comment I made, the authority of any town not to extend the agreement. And then on page eleven of the second full paragraph, third line toward the end, after the phrase "Change Orders," I would insert the phrase "Which made it possible," which made it possible to, and the next line, "Get," I would strike the word "there" and substitute the word "the" to get the money back. That's it.
Okay. Any additional corrections, edits? Okay. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Approval minutes for April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Again.
Okay, edits. Mike?
I just have one page and a couple of things. These are, I think these were my comments. In the second full paragraph, fourth line.
Page, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry, page nine, sorry.
Got it.
Second full paragraph, fourth line, it says, "Areas of Housing Development and create," I said, "and developing a wish list of sorts." The paragraph that begins, Mr. Shell reviewed, it says, "Committee membership." It's a board, so I would change committee to board, capital P, B. In the next paragraph, fourth line, line that begins, "Review," emphasize that the review will be a process jointly. It says, "Conducted between," I think, at least what I intended to say, and I think what I hope I said, was involving the Affordable Housing Trust, Board of Trustees, and the Select Board. And the, in the penultimate line there where it says, "Or May fifteen will allow the proposals to be presented," it says publicly, "The presentation is to the review committee," whoever that is, the, I said, "The Affordable Trust Housing Trust Meeting." So I think the word "publicly" should be deleted. Next paragraph, fourth line, in that area of town, I would strike, "Can be developed," and insert "Are being pursued." That's all I have.
Okay. Dean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of small ones, and maybe Mike caught these. Just a couple of small ones. Maybe Mike already caught these. On page twelve, under C, Town Council is misspelled. It's, okay. And then on the next page, and then right in the middle, Winnie Lear, it says Winnie Year. Ms. Lear's name. Page thirteen, under D. And on page fifteen, I think something's missing. Yes, Mr. Dykens, at the bottom, Mr. Dykens made a motion to appoint Barbara Conti as a member of the Human Services Committee. It doesn't have the typical ending until.
Good catch.
Yeah. With the term and the qualifying language. So that should be, that was part of the motion. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Good catch. Additional questions? Nope. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I just have one on behalf of our town treasurer, just to remind everyone that the real estate property taxes are due May first, so pay them up. Any agenda items for the board? Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just as a placeholder, kind of see where we are with one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road. Just, we haven't had an update in a while. Kind of don't know where that stands, so I just would like to get an update. Thanks.
Okay. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, the, this is, I guess, a combined agenda item request and an announcement. Recently, the Select Board and the Council on Aging Board met to hear a presentation regarding a feasibility study for one ninety-seven Stony Hill Road, the current site of the Center for Active Living. And a number of concerns and questions were posed to the architect, and I've spoken with the town manager, and she has indicated that she's going to have him answer or address those concerns and questions. And I'd like to have an agenda item for us to schedule a public forum in late June to review that feasibility study with those comments and questions. The longer-term idea that I would like to float, and this would be for the Select Board to consider, depending upon the level of support for either or of the, or all of the several proposals, of the proposed options that were presented by the architect, would be to have a second public forum in the fall. Between the first and the second public forum, I would ask the board to consider, and the town manager to engage the architect, to develop a design plan with hard cost estimates, so that could be presented in the fall. And depending upon the reception among the public for that, and the will of the Select Board, the board might entertain scheduling a special town meeting in the fall to consider the development, redevelopment of that particular building. But the immediate agenda item request with that information is that this board schedule a public forum in late June. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Additional for the board? Is there anyone from the in-house audience tonight with a public announcement or agenda item request? Is there anyone online with a public announcement or agenda item request? Okay. Again, public hearing is being rescheduled for May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, so there's no action on that. Now, we're going to move on to public comment on our business agenda, and like I mentioned earlier, item C, housing development, for one five three three Main Street and Zero Meeting House Road, I will allow public comment during that agenda item. So items A, B, D, and E, if there's anyone who has a question or comment, now is the time to do so. I'll open up to the in-house audience tonight. Yep, sorry.
Brian Phillips, three seventy-four Orleans Road. I was wondering with the charging stations, if we're going to count for the thirty percent more wear and tear electric cars have on our infrastructure, most notably our eleven million dollar bridge, like some sort of a tax?
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there anyone online? I see Elaine? Elaine, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, Elaine Gibson, I'd like to make some comments on the public charging stations.
Yep.
In the policy, proposed policy, it says widespread access to EV charging stations for public use at municipal properties throughout the community. So I assume that would mean eventually having them at the community center, all the downtown parking lots, at the beaches, at the town parks, and the fish pier. And then later, it says it's a commitment to residents, seasonal guests, and tourists. I would assume that most residents who have electric vehicles have their own charging stations at home, and so this is primarily going to be for seasonal guests and tourists. We have a finite number of spaces, parking spaces in Chatham. It's become, it's an ongoing problem, as we all know. It's particularly difficult for full-time residents who are trying to just live their daily lives and do errands and that kind of thing. And then a couple of weeks ago, we made it worse with the food trucks, where now there's a formal policy, we're on weekends, the ones in the downtown parking lot near where you are tonight, I'm sorry, downtown at the town hall, would be blocked off and cars towed if anybody parked there, whether or not the vendors actually showed up. And they're located at different places. I think it's a real hardship for full-time residents. This, again, seems to be for tourists and seasonal residents. So I would hope there's something in the policy that you do an analysis and find out, you know, what the impact's going to be, how many full-time residents would actually use them, and to have some sensitivity around that, because we're losing parking dramatically between those two different types of things. And to do it for basically tourists, you know, I kind of have a problem with. The full-time residents seem to be put on the back burner on a lot of these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional individuals online with a question or comment? All right. So we're going to move on to our business agenda. Item A, Consider Use of Sales on Town Property, Community Center, Castleberry Fairs on July sixth through seventh, August third to the fourth, September seventh through eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Terry Mullen is presenter. Is Terry available? Terry online? This has been before the Park and Rec, actually it's two separate entities. They first were approved for the July and August date. They recently went to the Park and Rec at their last meeting and were approved or supported for the September seventh dates. This is a vendor that has come before us in years past, so they're not new to the process. But questions or comments from the board, I guess?
I know that this vendor has done work, has done events here, and they do provide opportunity for local art artists. I just don't know if they've had events after Labor Day before, like the seventh and eighth. Is that a new, are those new dates? Do we know?
The September seventh and eighth date was an additional date that was added. I don't know if they've had dates that late in the past. I do not know.
Corey, typically, there's a representative here. We are familiar with this outfit. I'm not uncomfortable voting approval, but we're kind of betraying our own or belaying our own kind of policy by so doing. So we've had them before.
We, yeah.
Just to answer Ms. Davis's question, last year, they were approved for July eighth and ninth, August fifth and sixth, and September ninth and tenth.
Okay, so it's consistent with last year. Okay.
So it is consistent. Thank you.
If we're comfortable, I'll move to approve.
I am comfortable myself because they have been before us before. I think they have a decent track record, and it's consistent with last year's approvals. So I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, I move to approve the use of town property for Supreme Fairs to host three craft fairs on the front lawn of the Chatham Community Center on July sixth and seventh, August third and fourth, and September seventh and eighth, two thousand twenty-four, with setup beginning at six AM and cleanup completed by eight PM.
Second, but shouldn't it say Castleberry Fairs? Is that just a typo?
Thank you.
Should say Castleberry Fairs.
So the motion is modified to say Castleberry Fairs.
Yep. Approving in a different company. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Item B, Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest, Request for Exemption Determination from Barry Greco, Shellfish Advisory Committee. I will like to note that we have our Town Council, Pat Costello, who is online and available for item B and actually item C if necessary this evening. So boards desired, want to, Mr. Greco, would you like to step up to the podium?
Good evening, Chairpersons. I'm worried about that conflict of interest on our upcoming SAC meeting. Me being a member, and I was worried, you know, if someone files a complaint on the Ethics Committee on me, whether I should abstain from the meeting tomorrow or...
Well, abstention is essentially on an individual basis. I mean, every member of all our boards and committees, obviously well know, we've served, you know, for some time, but to take the ethics training, ethics certificates, and it is on each individual to make their own determination whether they need to recuse themselves or not. You've filed kind of another step in the process, potential process.
Yes, I was instructed to do this by a friend. He thought it was on my best behalf.
Yep, and that is what is before this board tonight for review and discussion. So I actually open up for the board for initial comments.
I don't want to make a comment, although I appreciate your attention to the issue. I, in light of what you just said about concern about somebody bringing an action against you, which I appreciate, I wanted to ask council if whatever this board does, that would give you complete coverage against a complaint either from a private party or from the State Ethics Commission, just so that we know what we're being asked to do and you know what the effect of it is. Are you on, Pat?
Pat?
Good evening. To answer Select Man Shell's question, yes, it would. It would provide protection. Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section nineteen B allows the appointing authority, which in this case is the Select Board, to issue a written determination that the interest involved is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town can expect from the employees. So if the board is comfortable that there's no likelihood of integrity being questioned or challenged with regard to the proposed action, if you vote this finding and issue a written determination, it would protect the employee from any charge under the Conflict of Interest statute.
Thank you.
Okay. Dean?
I just wanted to, thank you for coming forward with this. I appreciate that. I wanted to ask, what is the nature of your business? And I ask the question because...
Full-time shell fisherman.
Okay, so as it relates to the item that's going to be on the committee's agenda on the town?
The item tomorrow is getting rid of the prohibition on grants. Somebody had come in front of our board that wanted a grant, so all the laws would have to be changed if our board comes to you.
Right. Does your, and those would be agriculture grants?
Mm-hmm.
Does your business include agriculture work?
No, there's a prohibition in Chatham on agriculture grants. There is only one in Chatham.
Okay.
Longstanding.
Because, and I ask because the, we...
Because, because, and I ask because the, we, as you know, we had a request for the exemption that was withdrawn by, by another member of your committee who's since resigned.
Exactly.
And, and when, when he specified what he did, it seemed to be implicated by the vote, the motion that's going to be on your agenda tomorrow.
He has a grant, but it's not in agriculture. It's a-
But it sounded like he was in the business of, of possibly-
I can't really speak for him.
No, I'm just, that was my impression. So I was wondering if you were in the same.
No, I'm not.
That's a Kelp grant, it doesn't fall into the same jurisdictions.
Okay, okay.
Word of order?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Seth Taylor. The question, I think, Mr. DeCastro, is not, does he have that business since there are no grants? It is, would he be an applicant for an oyster grant if this board decided to open them up again? That's where the potential conflict would lie since-
Yeah, I was getting in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Yeah, thank you for, for your response. Appreciate it.
Jeff?
Yeah, so I'm struggling with this a little bit. So you're here because your, your, your committee, of what you remember, is likely to be recommending to the board, but we don't know that yet.
Possibly, yes.
Possibly, they're likely to recommend to the board that we'd like to, you know, nuke that, that bylaw, if you will, that reg, that there are no private grants in town. And as a result of that vote, which would likely support, you would also likely be an applicant for a future grant? Or you, or you wouldn't?
As of right now, I can't say yes or no. I'm not, I got plenty of other stuff to do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I struggle with where, how, when. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done before-
Oh, yeah.
You would even consider, you know, giving up public, you know, bottom for a private-
Many laws to be, yeah.
Okay, that helps actually, thank you.
So my question to you, Barry, is, you know, the Shellfish Advisory Committee, you know, and maybe Pat can clarify this a little bit, you know, it's, it's obvious that it's, should be all commercial shellfishermen and that there is an understanding that you'd be advising based on your area expertise. But there is a piece of it that says that if you have a specific financial interest in something, then that would be an, might be an opportunity where you need to recuse yourself. So you're answering your quest, the question with an ambiguous answer. I'm not sure if I would or would not apply for, if, if, if the grant came through. Give me a second, okay? I guess for anybody who's serving on a board, or any of us, is that we have, you know, we're embodied with this trust that we've appointed you as a, as an expert in your field and you've done a great job with the Shellfish Advisory Committee. I serve as your liaison and you weigh in on really important matters. And Barry, you, you're, you're, you know, you're really good at what you do and as a shellfisherman and, and what you've done as a volunteer for the town. You know, there are times, like in anybody's, you know, any examples, where sometimes we have to look and say, you know, is this something that I need to recuse myself? There's a direct, you know, interest or I am involved. This seems to me like you're unsure, you know, that whether or whether or not you are going to apply if, if in fact something like this comes along, which we know is going to take, as you had said, considerable time. I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm struggling myself with this, Barry, because of, you know, when we put the trust into people, we want to make sure that their integrity and transparency is there and, and that they're complying with, with, you know, the regulations and the, the mission of the committee. And we put it usually on the applicant, I mean, the, the committee member to make those decisions themselves. So I'm just, this is where I'm struggling is-
Okay, I'm not afraid of myself, I'm afraid of somebody else-
I understand that.
Sending me down.
So if-
By name being on the front page of the paper, Mr. Greco does it all for himself. And that's, I will recuse myself if I have to, but I don't want to.
Okay.
Jeff has a follow-up, then Dean has a follow-up, then I'm going to make a comment too.
Yeah, I guess I'm still struggling. It, it, then why, if you, if you don't know, then why don't, why doesn't every member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee?
Well, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have one. Yeah, we wouldn't have a committee if everyone, if everyone recused themselves.
So if I understand Pat's memo correctly, then we should make a criteria that all members of the Shellfish Advisory Committee need to be commercial shellfishermen. I think that's what I read. That's what I understand. Pat, you know, explain to me if I'm incorrect.
I don't think that's got anything to do with it.
Well, yeah.
There's, and I'll let Pat comment on this, and I don't want to jump in, but basically, yes. So the, the structure of our, the way we formatted the Shellfish Advisory Committee and frankly, all our waterway committees, kind of has opened up this, this conversation of conflict of interest. Just by the nature of your business, there's a, there's a conflict of interest implied. An element of addressing some level of that is to have the Shellfish Advisor, you know, specifically call out two commercial shellfisher, you know, fishermen, you know, one residential, delineate the membership titles in a sense that we give it, and I always take some type of protection, but and I'll let Pat and all you legal attorneys get up with the legal twist on it. But basically, it's a structural creation that allows for some protection on this conflict of interest. But Dean?
I just had a follow-up question, and I guess this would apply to every member of your committee. If, if this, our current regulation were to be rescinded and these grants were allowed to be issued, does that impact the shellfishing business? Does that take away areas that-
That's, that's, that's tough for me to answer some things that's down. And there's only two people on the board that are commercial shellfishermen.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know Pat might be speaking on this. And I did send a follow-up inquiry to Pat on these waterway committee matters related to conflict of interest. And as I read Pat's response and the Ethics Commission's regulation, the town, through the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, Select Board and the Town Manager, could establish criteria for membership on these committees. But the benefit, and maybe we should, but the benefit is limited to exempting them from conflict concerns only in the area of matters of general policy, not in matters relating to an individual member's personal financial interest. If you have a committee and an individual member has a particular financial interest, that is not, that type of remedy is not going to help them. The only thing that would help them is for the Select Board to grant an exemption under Section 19, which is what is before us. In my case, I have to be consistent with how I voted on this in the past. We recently had a vote on a member, on a request concerning the Affordable Housing Trust, and I voted not to grant the exemption. A few years ago, we had a vote to consider a request for exemption of a member of the Conservation Commission, and I voted no. I've always said that, and I apply this to myself, recusal is the, is the best policy. You can never go wrong with that. The problem with the Shellfish Committee is, and I just, I'm just hearing this for the first time, only two members are shellfishermen. If you were all shellfishermen, that's three. If the entire committee were, if a quorum of the committee were shellfishermen, they could invoke the rule of necessity, which is a technical thing. You could all say we have a conflict and then take a vote to allow yourselves to, to proceed. So I guess I come down on this one and it's not, I distinguish between the individual's integrity and the cert, the integrity of the services. So a no vote for me is not meant to be a disparagement of the applicant.
Point of order, please.
Mr. Chair, point, this is our deliberation.
So that's, that's where I'm likely to come down.
Mr. Taylor, hold on one moment, hold on one moment, please.
So that's where I'm likely to come down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This matter being discussed may be a commercial shellfishing issue, but it's also a public issue. And it's, you know, the, the agriculture discussion and policy discussion is going to go forward and it's going to be robust and it's going to be an interesting process. But it, it's not specific to just commercial fishermen because the public, recreational folks, boaters, everybody accesses the public ways which the commerce, which agriculture will impact. So in saying it's just a commercial fishing or shellfishing issue, it's not. It is a public issue. So, you know, so that makes it a bigger, 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 broader discussion, which the recreational folks have an impact, the public has an impact, whatnot. Just as a matter of information for you, Dean, that this is just not about commercial shellfishing.
Barry, can I ask you a quick question? So the action for the Shellfish Advisory Committee is basically a recommendation. So do you feel by not participating in that, you're shorting yourself basically?
Excuse me?
Are you shorting yourself?
Yes, I would love to participate in the meeting tomorrow.
But are you shorting yourself if you don't participate, do you feel? What I'm wondering is, is there enough of the committee that could act on it on a formal vote? It is a recommendation, it is not a formal action, but it's a recommendation.
Recommendation, you swing the gavel.
Correct, that is correct. But we are very clear with the potential conflict of interest that is being put on the table. And we, I think, I appreciate the position you're in by you not formally voting doesn't lessen your voice because we understand you've resigned, you know, you've recused yourself from the process.
So I can still attend the meeting, voice my piece, but not vote on it, not vote.
You cannot, if you're going to recuse yourself, you cannot deliberate on the discussion. So, and again, recusal action is upon each individual. Shereen?
He can however, I think I'm right on this, maybe Pat will have to tell me. If he is, he's still risking probably the conflict issue. He can sit and discuss, but he abstains from voting.
I believe that if you're going to recuse yourself from the process, you need to recu, yeah, it's, you don't participate in any, Pat, if you want to weigh in, but I believe you cannot participate at all.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. The bar is on participation in a matter in which a, a committee member may have a financial interest. That's where the contract lies, the conflict lies, pardon me. So participation includes discussion, deliberation and certainly voting. All of that would be prohibited if there is a perceived financial interest in the matter.
All right, Mike?
Well, I mean, you invited me to say something.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess you-
This is hard, as this discussion has suggested. I, two things. First of all, I'm inclined to agree, I don't want to say agree, but I, I understand Dean's consistency with respect to the other votes he's taken. That's frankly, at least where I'm concerned, more about us than it is about you. Where you're concerned, I'll be honest with you, I'm having a little bit of a struggle figuring out exactly what the conflict is. And you're welcome to address or, or, or assign that to my ignorance generally of the industry, but it's more a question of, first of all, it's advisory. I know that doesn't count, but we don't know, you don't know what, it's, it's purely a question of what happens ultimately here. And you've told us that you don't know what you would do if we, if we repeal the bylaw. That puts it in a pretty speculative category for me. That doesn't eliminate the concern you, and maybe somebody said something to you and I, I, you have to take that seriously.
Well, I can't give you a yes or no because I don't know, I'm not going to lie.
No, 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 but I'm talking about somebody threatening you with a claim if you act on this matter, which implies that, you know, your, your word is, is important to, to, to the outcome of the, of the discussion. I, I guess I, in, in attempting to go a little bit where Corey was going in a slightly different way, I, the one thing I think you can do, even if you recuse yourself, is you can come here when we consider the bylaw change and you can stand up there and pound the table and tell us that we ought to either not do it or do it. And, you know, the world will come to an end if we don't agree with you. And that, that will carry weight. More probably with people who know you than, better than I do, but that'll carry weight. So, you know, I, I guess I'd, I'd say, to me, the, the issue that we had with the Affordable Housing Trust was, I can distinguish that. This is a case where being a commercial fisherman is something that while it's not in the bylaw, it's not in our, what we say we want in our, our candidates, it's still something that's important to being able to carry out that, 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 that duty on that committee. And on that basis, I would distinguish it. I guess I'll close by saying I, you know, I, if, if you insist, I'll, you'll, you'll force me to think about distinguishing it, but I wish you wouldn't.
No problem. Jeff?
Yeah, I, my response is I think you're, you really ought to recuse yourself, but doesn't negate your ability to influence the debate and the discussion longer term. And you certainly have, you know, the, the knowledge and the support of certain key members of this Select Board, knowing your background and how involved you've been in the industry. You wouldn't lose any weight whatsoever with this board and/or the town, to be honest with you.
Great, Jeff.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, I will come here for the final, if it, if it gets as far, we don't even know.
I'm anticipating that, that it might, is what I'm hearing. So otherwise, you kind of wouldn't be here. So anyway, that's what I would do.
Okay, I got an answer.
Yep.
All right, so you'd like the board to take an action on your exemption request or? I'm going to recuse myself. All right, so you're asking for no action on the board tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks for showing up, thanks.
All right, item C. Housing development for 1533 Main Street and Zero Meeting House Row, consider delegation of project responsibilities and authority. Once again, after the Select Board has our opening discussions, I will entertain public comments on this agenda item. I do want to take a couple minutes to kind of just make a couple opening statements before we kick off the board. Couple thoughts. You know, there's a lot of emails that have come in up until the beginning of this meeting tonight. So all those will be added to the record for our minutes or review. This board, the Select Board, has been very, very supportive of affordable housing. More so over the last couple of years, we've identified larger parcels. I mean, the Meeting House Road and the Buckley Property are two of the largest parcels we've had to consider in, in quite some time. It's always been a house here or a smaller parcel there. But we have, you know, aside from the criticisms that we've received in the past, I think been very focused on obtaining efforts to move forward with the, with the housing projects. We have our new Affordable Housing Trust, who has also been very focused on reviewing the two larger parcels that we have in our inventory. I don't think either of these entities are looking to derail efforts to get housing done. I will recognize the sincere frustration in some of the process, but some of us want this done yesterday. It takes time, it takes patience, there's a process, there's reviews and et cetera, et cetera. But we want to get this done in as timely a fashion as possible and what is in the best interest of the community. Me personally, I do not like the kind of divide that's being created amongst the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board. I think we both have the same goals at the end of the night. We have some, some procedural, some, maybe some philosophical differences that we need to work out, but I think they can be done and they should be done and they will be done. Frankly, the biggest, you know, topic of discussion is probably the density issue. But I think that's something that can be done professionally amongst all of the committee members. I think the goal that's been mentioned by the board members, both on the Select Board and the Trust, is we're looking for people to be included in the process, collaborate with the neighbors, collaborate with the residents, be as transparent as possible and move this process moving forward. That, that is what has been my understanding from my colleagues. I believe it is true and I believe that, you know, we can, we can achieve this. I believe it is true, and I believe that we can achieve this. The topic this evening was put on, and I struggled a little bit with this, whether we should have it tonight, we should move it forward. Couple things. One, it's a discussion that needs to happen with all the select-- all five members of the select board present. So this happens to be a week that we all are here. Town council has opined, which is in our packet, that early in the process-- I'm not sure what "early in the process" is exactly supposed to mean, but we should designate a body to kind of lead the way forward, and we have not had that discussion. My hopes this evening, from my perspective, is that we start the conversation. I'm not necessarily thinking we're going to take any action tonight, but it's a start of a longer conversation. We haven't received the RFPs in yet, so we don't have any specific details to review yet. Those are going to be coming in, but they're due on the 25th. Again, there's a future process moving forward. So again, I'm kind of advocating for a status quo at the moment, letting both committees obviously be involved, as my vice chair said, the chair of the Housing Trust. Each of us will play a role in this process. So I'm hoping for, again, transparency, inclusion, and collaboration between both committees. I hope we can do this. I know-- let's see if there's any little points I want to make. And I really want to kind of stamp down on this perception of this power struggle that's been brewing. We're all colleagues. We're all professional. We all can work together. We are going to have differences of opinions. We are going to have differences of philosophies, but I want to reassure that the process-- at least anything I have control over will be done as transparently and as professionally as possible, and I think that collectively, I think we're all going to be in agreement with that, and I hope that, again, this conversation is the start of a longer conversation to what to do with these two parcels. So those are my opening thoughts. I will turn it over to-- Mike, would you like to start? And then, again, we also have town council on if there's any questions or comments or requests from him.
So the one thing, Corey, with all due respect, I want to just push back a little bit on in your remarks, is that this is the first such conversation. As a matter of fact, I don't remember-- I know there have been two prior discussions, and I know that the first one was at my instance. First, at the Affordable Housing Trust Board, and then here, asked for an agenda item where we would discuss how we were going to allocate, or exchange, or otherwise coordinate with respect to dealing with the process once we had-- how are we going to deal with proposals as they came in in response to the RFPs? Those discussions, I thought, were productive. They were collaborative. They were collegial. I think they were a little bit lacking in specificity in terms of, you know, who's going to do this and who's going to do that, but from my side, for me personally, I didn't think that was a problem because I really did think that we had all exhibited an intention to work together. And I, in the past, have adverted to it. I'll do it very briefly to say that, maybe shame on me, I misunderstood, but I really did think that Chatham, first of all, back in '21, creating a new Affordable Housing Trust that would contemplate building homes for people all the way up to 200% AMI, and that would be led by a new board, a different board, constituted a little differently than the old Affordable Housing Trust Board was, and renewed twice in our submissions to the state, our local petitions. I thought that-- what that said to me was that Chatham was basically saying that we're going to act on this initiative through the Affordable Housing Trust and the Affordable Housing Trust Board, recognizing that the part that dealt with building housing for people between 100% AMI and 200% AMI was something that was going to have to abide an approval from Boston, from the general-- excuse me, the general court, and that was something that was important because, you know, if you don't have the money and you can't use the money to build that kind of housing, you need to figure out other ways to do it. Nevertheless, the Affordable Housing Trust Board, from its inception, the current board, from its inception in October, was and remains committed to doing the best that it can to create two projects, one of which is exclusively affordable housing, namely up to 100% AMI, and the other of which is one portion of affordable housing and the remainder of it between 100% and 120% AMI, and if possible, depending on what we see in the way of proposals, possibly some units that would be up to 200% AMI. We proceeded in good faith-- and by the way, I mean, I can tell you, when I put my name in to sit on that board, I consulted my colleagues, and I made sure that if there was anybody else on this board sitting here tonight that wanted to take that task on, I would step back. And I offered that, and it was only when I was assured, no, that's fine, you go ahead, put your name in, that I went forward with that. And we have gone forward as an Affordable Housing Trust Board in an effort to create two proposals that we hope-- and unfortunately, that's the best I can do at this point until next week-- and by the way, it's next Thursday, Thursday week that we get those proposals in-- that we said, we think this gives Chatham the best chance to get something that we can work with and that will be satisfactory to as many people that will have the best chance at developing a consensus in Chatham, that these are good projects. And we recognize that's only a start, and we recognize that what the community has to say to us as we go forward, as we've been listening up until now, is very, very important because without consensus, we simply can't succeed here. Frankly, in my view, the process is complicated a little bit by the fact that legally, those proposals themselves have to remain confidential. That's not the Affordable Housing Trust Board. That's not the select board. That's not anybody else talking. That is the law. And that-- shame on me. I probably should have known that before, but I didn't really realize that until last week. So we're going to have to work with that and still get input from the community, notwithstanding that those proposals themselves have to remain confidential. I want to find a way here tonight that we can proceed efficiently and effectively because there's another factor here. We have people-- I'm told by one prospective bidder-- I don't think that they're going to be a proponent here, but the ballpark cost of submitting a proposal is in the neighborhood of $40,000, $50,000, maybe more. So people are investing in making proposals to us. We have an obligation to deal with those with respect and with all kinds of professionalism. And so I want to find a way here tonight that we can say, this is how we're going to proceed. Everybody is comfortable that they are going to get the opportunity to have their say before anything is committed, before any documents are signed, before anything is finished. And I had thought that what is in the packet, the staff report tonight, was a pretty fair resolution of those considerations. I still think that, but I will be welcome-- I will be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Shereen, would you like to go next?
Well, I think Mike said it well about the intention of both of us as select board members on the Affordable Housing Trust and the process. You know, the RFP process is complex, and as we go forward with, you know, looking at the proposals, and they are private, that there'd be a little bit of negotiation, you know, in what will come out of them ultimately. We are looking at, you know, dedicated Affordable Housing Trust people who have an area of background and expertise that lends itself well to the process, and I think we, as a board, wouldn't have appointed those folks to this board if we didn't think so. Again, though, I think when we've talked before-- you know, I've talked before that this is a collaboration and that we're all well-intended, and the perception that there's some sort of dissension amongst us is totally wrong. I think we just need to iron out this issue. Thanks.
Dean.
I'm good, Dean. I'll wait for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions for town council, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Okay, sure. Pat?
And I would note that there's an opinion that was disseminated to the select board today from town council, which I saw for the first time today, and I requested, and I think the chair has agreed, of the chair in the town manager's office that it be posted, disclosed. So it is posted. I was informed this afternoon.
Correct.
Pat, just a few questions. Your previous opinions, which are quoted in the agenda packets, and it was referred to by the chairman, contain the advice or the strong suggestion that there be a designation from one board to the other, released with respect to the property on Main Street because it is co-owned. Early in the process, I read that as practical advice as opposed to legal advice. Is that the correct reading? You're muted.
Yep. Can't hear you, Pat.
I think I'd know that by now. That's correct. This is a somewhat unusual situation. We have two executive boards that have a concurrent jurisdiction and interest over the development parcel. You typically don't see that in a major project like this. And in my view, having been involved with these projects for an excess of 30 years, the more we can streamline, centralize the control and decision-making process with respect to the project, the more efficient the project is likely going to proceed. Now, again, I have no course in the race of policy. That's your determination as a select board and as an Affordable Housing Trust. You determine the policies that relate to this. My main concern in making that recommendation was to provide for a centralized and direct chain of command for project activities, such that outside interference and issues don't become involved and bog the project down. Plan simple.
Thank you. My second question relates to the prospect of an executive session because it's indicated in the packet that the Affordable Housing Trust, I guess, plans to go into executive session on April 29th to review the contents of proposals submitted in response to the request for proposals for the two properties. In your opinion, you cite two statutes relative to the basis for going into executive session. One is the exception dealing with the negotiation or value of real estate. You say there-- an open meeting-- you say that the boards, either our board or the Affordable Housing Trust Board, in your opinion, may elect to meet an executive session. May elect. And you cite the exception that I just mentioned. You also cite Section 6D of Chapter 30B, which is the procurement statute. Am I reading this correctly if I say that the first exception would be an optional choice for the board under the valuation or negotiating the sale or purchase of real estate? And that the second exception-- and this is the one I'm more focused on, frankly-- where you say that, quote, this is from Section D, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 7 of Chapter 4 of the General Laws, which is the public records statute, "until completion of the evaluations or until the time for acceptance specified in the request for proposals, whichever occurs earlier, the contents of the proposal shall remain confidential and shall not be disclosed to competing offerors." Am I reading that correctly? That it is a mandatory provision that would require the boards to go into executive session? I'm not trying to ask a leading question. I'm trying to understand that. What I really want to know is, does the Affordable Housing Trust Board-- does the select board have the option of going into executive session to review these proposals? Or are we required to go? And let me add the follow-up question. I read the newspapers all the time, Orleans, Brewster, Harwich. They're discussing these proposals for affordable housing all over the papers. How is it that the public can be engaged in that process if these deliberations have to occur in executive session? So what am I missing?
You're not missing anything. Anytime a board votes to go into executive session, it's electing to do so. It's not required to do so. The key factor that a board has to consider when going into executive session, first and foremost, is whether or not the purpose for which the executive session is being called falls within one of the 10 exceptions that are set forth in Chapter 30A, Section 21. One of them is Section A6, which, as you noted, allows a board, when and only when its chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, can go into executive session to discuss the exchange, value, lease, disposition of real property. In essence, that's what we have here. We have issued an RFP soliciting proposals from prospective, not only land developers, but also grantees of the subject property. They are going to acquire title to the subject properties in exchange for an affordability restriction that the town will retain, and the terms and conditions of that transfer of interest are entirely subject to negotiation between the parties, consistent with the terms of the proposals. We don't even know what the proposals are going to offer, as we sit here right now. We have to wait until the proposals are submitted in a couple of days to determine what those, you know, developers are offering the town. In my view, given the disposition of the interest in real property that's clearly involved here, any board involved in that decision-making process would have the option of going into executive session if the chair deems it appropriate or that discussions of subject matter in open session could be detrimental to the town's negotiating position. Now, with regard to the second basis upon which an executive session could be called, Chapter 30B, Section 6, the provision of the Uniform Procurement Act, which you recited a short while ago, specifically states that the proposals received pursuant to a 30B, Section 6, solicitation ought to remain confidential until the evaluation period expires or until the date that's established in the RFP for the issuance of a final determination. That final determination date, in this case, I believe, is June 5th of this year. The reason for that provision in 30B, Section 6, is that whenever proposals of this nature are submitted, there's always room for negotiation. There are a lot of terms left somewhat open to negotiation between the awarding authority and the proposer. The confidentiality and the express prohibition against disclosing proposals to other competitive proposers is to maintain a level playing field, to maintain even ground amongst the proposers. The way these processes work is the initial evaluation process by the evaluation committee, in this case, will determine who the most highly rated proposer is. in this case, will determine who the most highly rated proposer is. The board, our boards collectively, will then engage in discussions and negotiations with that proposer to determine whether they can reach a final agreement. If they are successful in doing so, end of, end of the deal. That the, the land development agreement, purchase and sale agreement, deeds are ultimately executed. If those discussions fail, however, then you go to the next highest-ranked proposer and engage in negotiations with them. It would certainly be inequitable for that second proposer to have full knowledge of all of the discussions that went on with the first proposer. It would certainly give that entity an advantage that the initial proposer did not have. That, I believe, is the reason for the confidentiality requirement of 30B, Section 6, to maintain a level playing field amongst the various proposers who are going to be negotiating with the town boards. So in that case, since that provision of the Uniform Procurement Act mandates that the proposals remain confidential for the designated period of time, I believe that by inference, it would be improper for any town board or body to discuss the content of those proposals in an open session because it would undermine that very confidentiality requirement. And the basis upon which the exception set forth in Section 21A7 is that a town must go into executive session in order to comply with the provision of general law. That's what you would be doing in that particular case.
When and how can the public become involved? If, and I understand what you're saying, you can't have a public discussion if, about these responses without disclosing the contents. So when and how is the public involved in the process legally?
Well, it's, the evaluation period should be conducted by, the RFPs in this particular case specifically state that there will be an evaluation committee established, presumably by the Town Manager. That committee should engage in its activities to review and score the proposals before, in my view, public engagement takes place because that would, again, maintain the confidentiality of the proposals under 30B6. Thereafter, it could be opened up to public input.
Would it be appropriate for members of the public, if they have particular concerns about issues like density or types of structures, to, to communicate those concerns to the various boards or even to the Town Manager's Office while this process is going on?
Oh, absolutely. The, I mean, members of the public can communicate their sentiments relative to the proposed developments in any way, shape, or form they choose. That's their right. But the ultimate determination on what is to be developed on these properties lies with the executive boards, who have the legal authority to enter into the land disposition, land development agreements, and the, and to execute the deeds. That's an executive function. Certainly, that executive function is fulfilled with the aid and benefit of public input as appropriate. But public can certainly make its sentiments known to the powers that be in the town, but the ultimate decision will lie with the respective boards.
I have just two other questions. We've talked about the property on Main Street. The property on Meeting House Road was purchased exclusively with Affordable Housing Funds. So that's in the jurisdiction of the Affordable Housing Trust. What role, if any, does the Select Board have with respect to that property? Is it advisory or is it advisory by invitation or what? If any.
I would suggest the, that the, the authority that's vested in Affordable Housing Trust by Chapter 44, Section 55C is plenary in nature. It gives those trusts, as a separate distinct entity, full and broad authority to develop and create affordable housing within the town. So I, I would suggest that only to the extent that the Select Board is the chief executive officer of the town, may be required to issue an approval or, or certification of some type, whether it's through a, a subsidy program or otherwise. That would be the only real role, formal role, that the Select Board would play. Now, on the other hand, Select Board, as everyone knows, is the chief executive officer of the town. And I would anticipate that there would be some level of collaboration between the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board, even with regard to concepts of policy-type decisions with respect to the, the property. But from a legal perspective strictly, I believe the Affordable Housing Trust has very broad authority to, to develop these properties in its own right.
My final question relates back to the Main Street property and the role of the Select Board. You, it is, it is recited in the, in the packet that Annual Town Meeting in 2021 authorized the Select Board to convey lease up to 99 years, this property, for affordable and/or attainable housing purposes on such conditions and terms and for such consideration which may be nominal, as the Select Board shall deem appropriate. If, in fact, the Select Board were to delegate its responsibilities to the Affordable Housing Trust with respect to that property, is there such a concern in this instance of overdelegation? Legally flawed overdelegation? I know that's true in other areas of the law. I just wondered if that might apply in this instance, if, in fact, the final decision-making were, were to be assigned to the Affordable Housing Trust?
My thought on delegation would be that it would be of a more limited basis. It would be with respect to certainly the review of the development proposals, for example. The ultimate determination of who the, the appropriate developer would be for the property. Nonetheless, in my view, from a legal perspective, I think the Select Board should always retain the authority or the jurisdiction to execute any final land development agreement and certainly to execute any deed or long-term lease to the property of which the Select Board maintains proprietary control. So it would be, I guess, to answer your question directly, it would be somewhat of a limited delegation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My initial inclination is to follow suit with your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, of letting things stay where they are for the present and let the process go forward. Thank you.
Jeff, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Corey. Yeah, we've had this discussion, I think this is times three, this general discussion about kind of the tug-of-war, the push and pull, not a tug-of-war, but the push and pull between Affordable Housing Trust and the, and the Board. And, and I, I think it swirls around Main Street. I'm not positive, but, and who, who, who controls what, where, how, and Main Street most notably, because we do have to ultimately sign off on agreements and deeds there. And I'm, to be honest with you, the Affordable Housing Trust was created, we, we nominated folks and voted for them to, to be on the Affordable Housing Trust to do exactly what it is they're doing. So I scratched my head a little bit, wondering why we've been having this discussion, number one. Number two, I'm extremely comfortable with their having an executive session reviewing RFPs, but if we want to be involved, we want to know, we want to be involved the way we want to be involved, why wouldn't we then ask our representatives to the Affordable Housing Trust to report back to us in an executive session as well? Because we want to know what's going on. We want to see what's out there and have a say. And ultimately, if I understand Pat's, I just got Pat's note, I haven't, haven't really had a chance to read it, but if I understand his note, at least, at least for 1533, we're going to be asked to sign over agreements in, or, in, in land. We're going to be signing, we're going to be signing delegation agreements and/or signing land to a developer, giving land over or on both parcels. So at some point, the Select Board, I believe, is going to be asked to sign off on these. And I have the ultimate sign-off. So I'm, I'm, I'm real comfortable with the Affordable Housing Trust being the, being the body that opens these RFPs, but also comfortable with them reporting back here in executive session. And so we get an update on what's going on. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we travel down that path?
Well, make my point of clarification, and I'm going to let Mike respond also, is, as you know, we, Mike, myself, Town Council, Town Manager, some staff met last week, and we talked about the RFPs and about the executive session concepts. And as you can tell by the timeframe, timeline that is printed on, on, in our packet, you know, I have a different, I landed differently on the executive session concept. You know, we were discussing having two sole, separate executive sessions, one for the Affordable Housing Trust, one for the Select Board. I struggled with that a little bit. And at the end of the day, I decided against an executive session for the Select Board. The trust is going to move forward with it. Pat has explained why very clearly. So procedurally, is that something that can be happening? Yes. They can have the executive session. They can go through all their process as spelled out by our Town Council and then report back to the full board. I, I've taken the position that this, this, this body shouldn't go into executive session. If the, the board feels differently, then obviously I will clearly listen to the board. But procedurally, right now is queued up, that next week, the trust is going to go into executive session. The 25th is when the RFPs will be, will, will, hopefully get several RFPs. We, we have no idea how much, how many, what the contents are. We haven't, that is, will be determined very shortly. They're going to go into executive session, go through that process, and then, yes, could they report back to the full Select Board? Yes, that is, that is procedurally a possibility.
I would just follow up, Corey, and Pat made this point very well, I thought, for the reason for an executive session. We wouldn't not have an executive session with RFP still being negotiated. We would have to have an executive session. Otherwise, we're doing the, the respondents a disservice by airing, airing their proposals. So we, we would have to have an executive session, is what I determined from Pat's comments. So I'm, I'm, I'm one voice and, but I'm, number one, very, very confident and comfortable with the Affordable Housing Trust, and I'm also very comfortable having them come, our representatives come back and brief us on what's going on because I think we deserve to know what's going on.
Okay. Mike, please go ahead.
Yeah, well, thanks, Corey. You took care of one of the things I wanted to say, which was, I, I, I wanted to make it clear that when you and I talked, it was my proposal, not that I have any trademark on it or anything, but I, what I thought was the appropriate way to proceed was for both boards to get an immediate briefing on what's in any proposals that we receive. Affordable Housing Trust Board hears on Monday, on Tuesday, in executive session on Tuesday, this board, subject to your decision whether to do it or not, but this, this, this board would be briefed exactly the same way that the Affordable Housing Trust Board had been the night before. So everybody knows what's in every, all the relevant boards know what's in the proposals. To me, I, I appreciate you're uncomfortable with that or you have resist, or reservations. I, I'll, I'll just leave it that I, I had no purpose other than making sure that all, what is it, 10 people who sit on one or both of those boards would have exactly the same quantum of information about the proposals promptly after they had been received. The second thing, I just want to follow up Dean's line of inquiries with Pat, and I want to ask Pat, when you said limited, limited juris, sorry, limited delegation, I want to draw your attention to the recommendation in the staff memo, which talks about authorizing the delegation, to, to, to delegate the project development oversight and review authority for both projects, Main Street and Meeting House Road, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, both Board of Trustees, with final recommendation back to the Select Board for execution of the land disposition agreements and/or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in a sense, what this does is it confers authority that we actually have as the Affordable Housing Trust back to this board. At the same time, it is saying that the Affordable Housing Trust Board will go forward to be the, if you call, the, the, the spear carrier with respect to both projects. Go, go work it out, figure out what's best, do the negotiation, come back to this board, this Select Board, and present that with your recommendation, and the Select Board decides. My question to you, Pat, is whether that is consistent with what I heard was your, your, your recommendation, albeit not as a legal matter, not as a legal opinion, but just as a practical opinion?
Yes, it is, Mike. Again, the goal when you have a project like this is to have a centralized and clear chain of command in how the negotiations will proceed. You're dealing with developers who are in this business 24/7, 365 days a year. They know all the ins and outs. We have to be sharp. We have to be on our toes from a business perspective. And I think that centralizing the decision-making authority, at least in those preliminary matters, would ultimately be in the town's best interests. Again, the Select Board will always have final approval authority with respect to the land disposition agreements, the execution of the deeds of the town-owned property. But I think it would make the process, strictly from a procedural perspective, much more efficient if there was that centralized control.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So I, I would, I mean, if we want to come to some conclusion, which I wouldn't mind, but I, I would recommend that we follow the course of, you know, entrusting and empowering we already have, the Affordable Housing Trust to open the RFPs and then to shortly thereafter, either in a joint executive session with both boards or with our representatives, and I think that's up to some discussion, our representatives there too, coming back to this board and briefing us on what, what's going on and what the options are or aren't and what's out there. I, I'm very comfortable with that. I don't know what else to say. I'll move one or the other after I hear back from the rest of you.
Different thoughts? I mean.
The only thing, I, I, forgive me for leaping in here, but I do think before we take any action, we should hear from the.
Oh, we are going to, yeah. And, and, and in full transparency, we had a little back and forth about joint executive sessions. There's some elements of it that we were landing on an agreement, we were landing on disagreement, but it was a conversation that was had, you know, and, but again.
That's unknown to me till.
Right, no, in fairness, in fairness, and that, that's why I'm, I'm putting it out there, being transparent with it. And again, we had some dialogue. Pat was explaining, you know, some legal elements of the situation. And again, at the end of the day, I landed on executive session was not the right mechanism for the Select Board to be taken from my, that was my position. And that is a decision I made last week, and this is why it's not in the timetables. So just to be as transparent as possible, that's where we are from my, my perspective.
Appreciate that, Corey. Thank you.
So I am going to open up to the board. Anyone in the public would like to speak? Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Seth Taylor, Taylor Lane. I rise to speak to you tonight as a taxpayer and a voter. And those are distinctly different individuals, although there's quite a bit of overlap. They have different concerns. And, Mr. Chairman, I've heard tonight, three, maybe four times, you use the word transparency or the word transparent. And as a taxpayer, I'm offended by the lack of transparency in what is being proposed. And I say that because we're looking at what may have been accidental or may have been intentional. I don't know. I haven't been privileged to what's going on. But there's a big difference between an RFQ and an RFP. An RFQ being a request for quote, when we know what we want to buy and we ask someone to sell it to us or build it for us. And where an RFQ is involved, the general public is fully aware of what their taxes are going to go to purchase. For affordable housing, it would mean that in advance of developing these two properties, we knew that there would be single structures with four apartments in each, the general scope and scale of the project, the general appearance potential of them, if it was limited to two stories or three, simple things that may occur to people who are concerned with efficiency, that the general public shouldn't worry their silly little heads about. But as a taxpayer, I do worry my silly little head about what is being done with my money and in my name. And the notion that an RFP needs to be concealed and protected. And the notion that an RFP needs to be concealed and protected, we understand that. But to build a system where ultimately what lands on these properties is going to be almost in the bank before the general public can understand it is an offense to a taxpayer, an offense, I hope, to all the taxpayers in this town. Not to belabor that point, I won't go further, but it is a problem. It is not transparency, Mr. Chairman, and it is not transparency, members of the board. On the issue of appearing here as a voter, we, the voters of the town, can appear annually or as you deign appropriate to town meetings, or we can voice our opinion. We even have the right to petition, to create new laws for the town and for you guys to follow. And every year, we get to elect or reelect two or one of you to serve as our representatives. We do not vote for appointed committees. And as a voter, I'm offended by the notion that a minority member of members of the select board and appointed individuals will be making closed-door decisions instead of open decisions where the general public can review what they're doing and what they're saying and how they're acting on our behalf, or whether they're even acting on our behalf. At a minimum, there should be three members of the Board of Selectmen on the Affordable Housing Trust. And nothing should advance from that body unless all three of those members of the Board of Selectmen are in agreement. Because you folks, our elected officials, are the only ones, when you act in a majority of three, have our trust to proceed with anything that compromises we, the people of this town. You can do what you're planning right now. I've listened to Pat, and it's an interesting and a very clever workaround. I will put that there. And again, maybe it's intentional, maybe it's accidental. I heard him talk about the fact that we're looking for efficiencies. You know, what happened to 1610 Main Street was a mess. Let's not have that happen again, huh? That's a problem with democracy, folks. But we are not in a totalitarian government, and you folks need to be more sensitive to the fact that we, the people that put you in those spots, have a vested interest in open government and clearly understanding what is being done in our name and how it's being done. I wish no offense, but this is a very, very slippery slope you're walking down. And it's a usurpation of the people's trust, in my opinion, if you advance without a more open opportunity for the people to be fully aware of what's going to be developed on these properties. I appreciate your time this evening, and I wish you good luck with your deliberations, however they may be.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else in the audience with a... David, if you want to step up, I want to make a, just step up. I just, I remember, I was expecting a member of the trust to step up. I want to be very clear. You're the first hand up, perfectly fine, no problems. If a fourth member of the trust wants to speak, I will not call on them because I can't knowingly open up a conversation with the majority of the trust, because this is not a trust-posted meeting. So you're the first one up, you're perfectly fine, but I just want to put it out there. It's, I was expecting something like this to happen. So just to be fair, you're perfectly fine, but I'm sorry to the rest of the trust members, I can't allow a quorum of the board to deliberate, so.
Well, David Oppen, I haven't been called perfectly fine in a while, so that's, thank We went in front of the town meeting several times for a separate Affordable Housing Trust, several times it was attached to something else that was finally approved. We have an Affordable Housing Trust. Speaking personally, I volunteered for it because I've been, our family's been involved with affordable housing for years. I've been in the building and development business for over 50 years and felt that I had something to offer. The Board of Selectmen has many things to do, everything from daytime liquor license to financing and everything else, and couldn't devote the time that the Affordable Housing Trust. So this, once it was voted at a town meeting and approved by legislature, you chose the most qualified people, and you did a good job with qualified people, in my opinion. We have Carol McClellan on it, who has a Habitat House. She's the head of our Committee for Housing, Community Housing Trust, I think, for affordable housing. Leslie Schneberger is on the board of Habitat, and she's an architect, she's excellent. Bruce Bean's been involved with affordable housing for years. She was on your original Affordable Housing Trust when it was the Selectmen with two at-large members. We have a good group, and we have dove, we dove in, we all had levels of expertise. And then we found out that we had a lot more to learn. And we have Gloria McPherson, who's our housing, and I have the right terms, housing coordinator. She's done an amazing job helping us learn the process and understand what we have to do and how we have to go about it. She's brought in experts from CDP, Community Development, has been doing it all on the Lord Cape for years, Housing Assistance Corp, Cape Cod Commission, we've had state people down. We're all learning. Some of us go to seminars on these things and understand, so we can understand and develop the expertise. And I'm sure there are people in this town that are very knowledgeable on particular things. As a board, I'm very comfortable saying, our Affordable Housing Trust at this point have become, I don't even want to use the words, but have more expertise than any board has had in this town on affordable housing at this point in time. And we will have lots to learn going forward. The next learning step for us is to see what comes out of an RFP. And there's a lot of misconceptions that there hasn't been and reactions to people. I know, for example, I had somebody call me up after we had one of the meetings where they had those two sort of model-looking conceptual things, which personally, I think, I wish we hadn't done in some ways, but that's what we had to look at. And they said, well, you wanted the 60-unit thing. I said, no. My only comment that I made myself was I liked the closeness of those buildings to the street. I thought it gave, was better for the neighborhood center. I didn't comment on the density at all. I've made no decisions on density personally. That's why we're getting professionals to make proposals. The, what I do know, because I have been involved with some of the companies, not these particular ones building, but other affordable housing in other areas, people making the sense that they're going to go for the most they can get. Not necessarily. I mean, they have to make a living, they're entitled to make a living, they have to get certain types of financing on things like this. I would like to see what their creative talents are before we make any judgment. And I think we've established the expertise to do that. There was a suggestion, I don't know if it's on the table or suggested, about staff doing this. There's nobody on our staff that has more expertise than our housing coordinator and our Affordable Housing Trust. We're the experts now for the town. Doesn't mean we're not looking for input, we're definitely looking for, I'm trying to get input from people every single day when I talk about affordable housing. I was looking for input from people when we did the Kroll Roadhouse on affordable housing, and we're continuing to look for it. I said this at one other meeting, let us do our job. We're going to work with the select, we're not going to do anything, there are laws, as Pat said, with regards to confidentiality for competition, things like that, those make sense. I've never thought we weren't going to be dealing with the Board of Selectmen on, shall we say, not just the shared, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, our shared overview of the Buckley property, because some was bought with town funds and some with affordable housing. So there's a, we need to do it together, and we should do it together, and we should come up with some. But what's also clear, it's not going to satisfy everybody. Some people are, we're not even going to satisfy the people that want the most, that you can fit on anything. And we're not going to satisfy the people that want the least. What we're going to do is address housing, do our job, which is to address the housing needs in this town the best way we can. You appointed us. The idea that it has to be elected officials, we have a Board of Appeals that makes decisions every day, they're appointed, with planning boards, we have all these types of things. And, you know, we go for zoning bylaw changes to town meeting, but we don't go to the Board of Appeals, decisions are not questioned. You know, somebody has the right to appeal. It's a long process, and all I ask is you appointed us, I think you appointed a good board, I think you appointed, I don't know how many, I think there's probably been 98% attendance at meetings of our board. I don't know if I missed one. I think Bruce Bean has missed one, and I think somebody else missed one other. But we're all there, all the time, and that's at the meetings. Gloria's always trying to give us more information, get us more expertise, and we've all learned together, not just about affordable housing, but how to work together as a team to try to make something happen. Let us do our job. Thank you.
Sorry, another handed, yes.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Paula Wiseman, Kendrick Road, thank you for your service, first of all. I know you probably saw my email, and yes, I'm being tough, but this is our little town. And those RFPs can still be protected and still shown to the people. You just take the names out. And you guys, when you do your analysis, because I'm a businesswoman, I've run businesses before, it's just like a business. It's a proposal. You put out a spreadsheet, Company A. Company A doesn't have to have a name, and just what you found was positive about that company. Company B, what's positive about this company? Company C, what's positive about that company? So that we, the people, can see what's going on. We do have every right, right? And we do trust you to do this, and we want you to do it right. But our little town is our little town, and we love it here, okay? So we want it to be the beautiful quaint town that it's been for so long. And yes, we want to have affordable housing. We want to have affordable housing that is for the people that can't afford housing, okay? So some of the regulations are kind of dicey, you know, it's going to maybe 1% of the town, and it is by lottery or some, something, excuse me if I don't know the exact terms. And I could be wrong, but if I remember a while back, there was something about lottery, okay? So to me, those RFPs can be publicized, you protect the companies, and that's not hard to do. And also, we do have a right to know what's going up. You know, there were those wonderful displays put up by a couple of companies that showed beautiful facilities. But you do have to answer to us, okay? And we do expect you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional members of the audience? How many hands do we have online? Just one? Ms. Gibbs, Elaine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't even know where to begin on this. I am really surprised at the saying that it has to, that basically the bottom line is, as of today, we will not know, the public will not know what design you have chosen until after it's been basically offered under, because of the procurement of 30B6. I can't imagine how anyone could think that's okay. Under 30B6, the procurement is for general RFPs. That would be like when we went out on the wells, Wells 5 and 8, and said we want a treatment plan. Everybody knew what they were supposed to build, they were basically given, this is what we want, this is what we need, and it was based on cost. I've been to, I've attended remotely every single Affordable Housing Trust meeting and the other, the other housing authority, et cetera. I find it amazing that we could say that a group of people that are not elected would make that decision, and we cannot see it. The RFPs were really clear, if you've read them from Meeting House, it was open-ended. It's not just building well. It's saying density anywhere from 34 up to infinity, different style houses, et cetera. You're going to, if you get in three proposals, they're all going to be totally different. They're going to cost different. And it said in the RFPs that the boards would have the ability to choose it, not based on price, but on design and all those other criteria, and, or they could reject them all. So I don't think 30B6 even applies. And I think that it's really important that the town, we're going to be expected to pay for this, we're going to be expected to live with this. And I have attended the meetings, and I've asked many questions, and I've never gotten the answers. And I would debate that some of the people who come in there as experts know what they're talking about. At the last meeting, they couldn't even define what year-round housing meant in affordable housing. So in terms of not allowing us to see it, I think you're going to have a real problem. This is our town, we're going to be expected to pay for it, we're going to be expected to write a huge check, and we're going to be expected to live with the consequences. In terms of taking any vote tonight as to giving authority to the affordable housing, again, I have a real problem with that. The Affordable Housing Trust has their own mission and objectives, and they're very narrow. It's affordable housing. The select board is responsible to the town, you are elected officials, not appointed, and you're elected to protect the interests of the entire town and the voters. And in that, it is, you have to look at the things, not just the costs, but the water that's going to be used, the density, the traffic, what it's going to do to our taxes. And we expect that. So at the very minimum, if you go into executive session, I believe it should be a joint meeting at the beginning, not having the Affordable Housing report back to you. I think everybody should be in on that meeting. But I think it's premature. The RFPs are coming in, I think Mr. Shell said next week, they're coming in the day after tomorrow, April 25th is the date. And the executive session is on the 29th. Our needs assessment has to be done every five years. The last time it was done was in 2018, and there's been a lot of public forums and questions and everything. We're not even going to receive those results until May 22nd at minimum. How can you even choose a developer until you know what the needs assessment is? They're the ones that are going to determine, oh, well, you need a lot of one bedrooms, or you need a lot of two bedrooms, or you need families. Unless you think that it's just an act of, you know, doing it just because we're required to by law, the needs assessment should be looked at before any decisions are made. So I think that you've got to rethink this. We've been told there was going to be transparency. People ask questions, we don't get the answers. And now to hear this, that we may never even know, and that a group of unelected people are going to make a decision on our behalf, and then tell us how much it's going to cost us. We don't get to say anything about the design, how many units, how much traffic, what the parking's going to look like, how it's going to get funded. We're just going to be told, this is it, and that is not the way to do business. That is wrong. And I think that if you even consider giving that kind of authority to an unelected body at this point, it is way, way premature. So I hope you will reconsider. And the other thing is, nobody even knew this meeting tonight was going to happen until Friday at 4 o'clock, when it was posted on the agenda. I think that's wrong, too. That's why nobody's in the room, because nobody knew about it. Nobody knew you were even going to consider this tonight. And that's just another example of the lack of transparency, which I find, you want us to trust you, but when I see this kind of action, when this is going to affect every facet of our life, and we want it to be for town employees, for example, you know, they could come in with AMIs. The two criteria that they used were to make sure the builder could make enough money, okay? And density. Those were, and to stay within the AMI of 80 to 120%. Nothing about the quality of life or bringing in families and what's going to happen, and it's in perpetuity. There are so many questions, what happens when we turn land over to the developer and he goes bankrupt? We have no control anymore. Or we find out we don't need those 80 to 120% AMIs. We need to provide housing for people who want to age in place, market rate. We want to offer it to town employees because they would not qualify otherwise, their incomes are too high. All of these questions- All of these questions, you're pushing this so fast, you want to get it done. You can either get it done fast, or you can get it done right. And I am concerned that the way this is going, you just want to get it done, and it's not going to turn out well, and it's going to be really unfortunate for the town. So those are my comments right now. I hope you don't take a vote tonight. I think it's way premature. You need to wait for the needs assessment, and you need to, at least for the select board, to see what the RFPs even say. And I would also say that I don't believe 30B6 applies in this situation. And I think that we have a right to see these before any decision is made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. I do not see any other hands online, so I'm going to go back to the board.
Excuse me? Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Gloria Hicks, Meeting House Road. You know, we started this a long time ago, and the thing that was discussed ad nauseam was the density. That's been everybody's, you know, dirty word. The RFPs went out by the trust without a parameter for a maximum on the density. You saw the outcry from that. So on the one hand, we're hearing about inclusion, and we want to hear from the public, and you know, it's important. Is it? Because it doesn't feel that way, sitting where we're sitting. And with all due respect, you know, you talk about the board not being divided and divisive. You can feel it. It's palpable in these last meetings when we've been talking about this. There's a real power struggle going on here. And I have to agree with the two other speakers, which is the other point I was going to bring up, is the select board are elected officials. We put you in the chairs of the year-end to represent the people. I think the trust and all the other committees should report to the board. The board should have the ultimate say. You are the governing body of the town. And to be perfectly blunt, I'm sorry, but I feel like the trust has far too much power. I feel like the trust doesn't answer to anyone. I don't know why there are two select board members on the trust. Why isn't there one? Because you've got two select board members that are on the trust, and they get to have their say on the board as well. You cannot be impartial. You cannot be unbiased. You voted the way you voted on the trust, and then you're bringing all of that to the select board. So the way that it's set up, I just don't understand. And this is an important conversation that we're having, and I don't think there should be a vote. This needs to be discussed for a little bit here. This is important, because this sets the stage for how to do business going forward. And the other thing I have to bring up is the transparency. I'm not feeling things being transparent. And the other, before I get into that, I just, once these proposals go to a developer, the town no longer has control. The developer has control for these projects. So it's so important, that's why it was so important for the RFPs. And the other issue I have with the trust is a conversation that I saw, I think it was on March 12th. The trust was talking about the Old Harbor site, and there's been a lot of discussion about that, and it's been handled very differently than what's going on in my neighborhood. Mr. Oppenheim said that he didn't want to see, quote, "a lot of density at Old Harbor." Well, I'm seeing a lot of density in South Chatham. You've got the Meeting House parcel next right on one house over. You've got the other piece on Main Street that I don't know if you've purchased or you haven't purchased, but if, in fact, the trust does purchase that property, I do believe it affects the density and can increase the density for Meeting House. Correct me if I'm wrong. So when I hear, I mean, to hear that, I was just like, it was predictable, but it was stunning to sit in the meeting and hear it. If you need housing, you need housing. And if you need housing, you need it everywhere, correct? Old Harbor should not be treated any differently than South Chatham, Main Street, or where you're purchasing at the cemetery, the acreage there. That kind of conversation, that kind of bias is so inflammatory to residents all over town. If you need the housing, you need the housing. You know, it's like, yes, we, you know, we're doing this, we absolutely have to have the housing, but only in certain parts of town. And is all of the affordable housing going in one small area of South Chatham? I realize there's property there. I realize that the cost for those properties are less than other parts of town, but there are other parcels all over town as well. So when you talk about density, it's not just Meeting House, it's not just Main Street. It's the density in a particular area of town that is to be considered as well. So I hope you spend time, a lot of time, thinking about this, because the select board is our governing body, and everything should go to them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing. The new Affordable Housing Trust was specifically designed with two members of the select board, one member of the housing authority, four at-large people. So this was the town meeting implemented process. So that is why there are two members of the select board present on the new trust. I also, I know Pat's still on. Also, I just want to just put everything on the table, is we also have a legislation pending to create a Chatham Housing Trust. And if Pat could just take one moment to explain what exactly that means, and what is, that will clarify or impact the process moving forward.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The pending legislation we have would enhance the authority of the Affordable Housing Trust to basically allow it to develop both affordable and attainable housing beyond the strictures of the current general law statute. It would, in essence, broaden the scope of jurisdiction that the trust would have over proposed housing developments.
All right, thank you. Shereen?
Thanks, Corey. I just wanted to clarify, you know, the RFP process. The RFPs were written based on public engagement, a public engagement process that lasted quite a while. I think we were six months, maybe nine months, going through that. That included a series of forums, surveys, and the board, the trust, the trust took that serious when the RFPs were being written. And I just wanted to make that clear to the public, that that was the way the process went.
Dean.
I just had a follow-up for Pat on the legislation. So I don't know if the legislation has been. Has, it's not been passed yet, but it's pretty close to passage. It's in third reading in the Senate. The original legislation that was authorized by Town Meeting a few years ago included the current structure of the Affordable Housing Trust, as the chair just outlined. Is that still in the final version? That's, in other words, it would codify in statute what Town Meeting codified in our bylaw in terms of the composition, of the current composition of the trust. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask one other question, back to Section 60, because I wasn't familiar with that section until, you know, I heard about it in this context. So as much as I would like nothing more than to have these RFPs discussed publicly, I feel like I'm stuck by that section. Is that, in other words, that prevents me from doing that?
Well, I think the sealed.
In an intelligent way, because you can't really have an intelligent conversation about RFPs, responses, if you can't disclose the contents of them.
The sealed proposals, Dean, as you know, can relate to supplies and services. And the RFPs indicated that they were being issued pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30B. Didn't specify specific sections, but the content of the RFP clearly indicates the town is soliciting proposals whereby we would be exchanging title to property for development, services, and improvements to that property. So I think that 30B, Section 6, would be applicable in that sense. And when it comes to discussing confidential content of the proposals, I, you know, certainly any board could engage in a public discussion and be general about what proposals may contain. Again, I think the underlying purpose of that language in Section 6 is to maintain a level playing field amongst the proposers. And it expressly says that the contents of the proposal shall not be disclosed to competing offers. So does that mean a board can't say anything publicly whatsoever about the scope, nature, or extent of the proposals? I would suggest not. But I think that there would have to be due diligence in not disclosing content that could violate that provision, Section 6. It could be a general discussion on the proposals.
Did I hear you say that the RFPs, within their four corners, did say they were being issued pursuant to 30B?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike.
Yeah, a couple of things here. You're going down a road, Pat, here that is certainly in my mind. At the risk of, I think that problems get solved better when there's less law and more, you know, get together and work it out together in the process. But there is a principle in law, at least in deciding cases, that you don't decide hypotheticals. You don't decide cases without all the facts in front of you. And I think that we're, I want to reiterate that I think whoever it is, I don't care whether it's this board, or the Affordable Housing Trust Board, or a collection of people off the street who end up deciding and evaluating the proposals, they are going to be saddled with the challenge of making sure that what they decide and how they go about getting to a decision on whom to select and how to negotiate with whom they select, they have to figure out a way to get input from the public that is precise and is focused on some of the things that they see in those proposals. And, you know, I can't tell you exactly how that is likely to go, but I absolutely think, apropos where Dean was headed a little bit, and where you were headed generally, that it will be incumbent on that agency to figure out ways to get input without necessarily, in fact, without disclosing the specific terms to which they're seeking input and responses from the public. It's, I think, going to end up being something of an iterative process, and I think that, at least as far as I'm concerned, and as far as my leadership of the Affordable Housing Trust Board is concerned, that that will be an integral part of what we try to do going forward. I want to make one other comment here. Generally, I think this has been a productive session, and we've gotten some really good input from people. I want to, and I don't want to get into a debate with anybody, but I do want to say that the basic program here is the town is offering land on some basis in exchange, potentially for some money, but in exchange definitely for a development plan for the land from which the town takes back a perpetual affordability limitation or restriction on the land. There is no concept going in that the town is going to be asked to write a check. Now, that could happen, but that is not the plan here going into it. And indeed, one of the reasons that we structured the RFPs the way that we did was we wanted to maximize the prospect of getting proposals that were self-financing.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, quit.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just have one question. You've already received an email from me. Based on everything I've heard, I guess my question would be more directed towards Mr. Costello. Is there a possibility that since the bone of contention that is greatest is density? And I think that's where the public and your boards are having some issues. Is there any way legally that we could segregate the plan and design part of the proposals from names, from estimates, from anything else, just so that the public at least had an idea of what was going to go on that piece of property? That's all I have to say. I hope you will think about that, and maybe Mr. Costello could opine a little on that.
Pat, do you want to give a thought?
Sure. Yeah, as previously noted, I do think that, once the proposals are received, that the board could engage in general public discussion about the nature of the proposals. Let's put it that way. I think the previous speaker made a good point. If we were to segregate the specifics of proposals or speak more in generalities in terms of the nature of design, or, you know, density seems to be a big word, but, I mean, without tying them to any particular proposal, I think a very compelling argument could be made, that we're not disclosing the quote-unquote "content" of any particular proposal. So that's something we could certainly give thought to and try to structure down the road.
Thank you, Pat. All right. What does the board desire?
We have, and by the way, I stand corrected, Ms. Gibbs is right. It's the day after tomorrow that we're going to receive those proposals. I think to continue a discussion in the fashion that has been suggested is an imposition that we should not impose on the people who are making proposals to us if we are going to have proposals. And on that basis, I would like to propose, to move, to adopt the resolution that's set forth in the recommendation in the staff memo.
The very last page, page four, you put your recommendation.
Yes.
Actually, I'll need a, is there a second? There's no second.
I'll second it.
Okay. And the motion is, should the board decide, should the board decide to authorize that delegation staff respectfully suggests the following motion? Move to delegate project development oversight and review authority of 0/1533 Main Street and 0 Meeting House Road to the Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees, with final recommendation back to the select board for execution of the land disposition agreement or agreements, and for other legal documents slash instruments, comma, as identified by Town Council. That is the recommendation as printed for in their packet. So we have a motion, we have a second, further discussion. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot support that motion tonight. I've said in previous meetings that I would certainly consider delegation, and I understand the practical advice that Town Council has offered, but I feel like I'm being asked to make a delegation blindly and prematurely, because I don't know what's in the responses. No one knows what's in the responses, and we'll know, no one will know until after two days, hence, so I think this is just a little premature, and I don't think it's really, I don't think we really need to do anything tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will chime in. I am not going to vote in favor of this motion. I do think, I'm more inclined not to take a vote at all tonight. It would be my priority. It would be my preference. You know, I think we could, you know, we've discussed, we even tossed around the idea of a joint, you know, executive session that didn't seem to be amenable to all parties. I think we, I'm not looking for a power struggle, but I feel an obligation to maintain our independence to some level in this process and do it in as professional a manner as possible, but I will not support this motion.
So why then do we appoint an Affordable Housing Trust? And why did Town Meeting approve it times three? Why do we seek applicants that are talented and smart and know how to negotiate with developers? Why did we go all through that? And that's not a rhetorical question. I'd like an answer.
I'll answer it. Thank you.
How can you expect me to vote to delegate to another body? Complete control over, I understand there's some limitations, maybe it's less than complete. But I don't even know what's been offered to the town. You know, I'm perfectly willing to sit in on an executive session, whether it's joint with the Affordable Housing Trust, or whether there's an executive session subsequently to next, whenever you're going to meet for the Select Board, as you suggested, Jeff. But I can't vote something blindly like that. I don't think, I don't think that's responsible on my part. I understand what you're saying. And the public should know that the trust was set up by, by, by Town Meeting.
By Town Meeting.
And it's Town Meeting that funds the Affordable Housing Trust. So they have some controls over what's done by the trust. But that's my, that's my thinking.
I just like to point out, my term on the Affordable Housing Trust ends on June 30th. So, you know, this board is more than free to make a change, and there's at least one other or two others that change at that time. So the notion of control here, I mean, if you want to get into all the details of it, this board has control.
My term expires on May 16th. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I actually prefer having an executive session shortly after receiving. I know that the Housing Trust is getting it Thursday, and they'll have a session on Monday. I think we ought to have an executive session on Tuesday, really do. I think that's the way to go. Keeps us wrapped in, informed, whether it's with our representatives reporting back, or whether it's a full meeting or whatever of the Affordable Housing Trust and the Board of Selectmen, an executive session. I'm very comfortable with that approach. So I'm probably not going to vote for this, and I would make that a motion should it fail. Thanks.
Well, if we could have, as a board, an executive session to look at the proposals next Tuesday, I'm more than happy to withdraw the motion.
And I'll withdraw my second.
So I will make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Make a motion for the Select Board to have an independent executive session.
Along with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Independent or jointly?
Jointly. You don't want to do that?
No, 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 no.
We will get as many members of the Affordable Housing Trust to that meeting on Tuesday night as we can for the joint executive session.
I honestly think that's the way to go, Corey.
I hope we can do it at the beginning of the meeting so they can leave and they don't have to hang around until the end of the meeting.
Okay, motion, second, discussion, clarification. You know, this is something that we discussed, and there was some pushback on it.
I wasn't there, Corey.
I know, I know, and this is, this is the...
I'll be very honest, I was the source of the pushback. I'm withdrawing the pushback.
Okay.
If the board is so inclined to do that, I will support it. I still have reservations about it. I understand where Pat's going for it. Procedurally, I know it. If that's what the board's so desired is, then I will support it. But I do note my reservations, you know, because I do think the optics of it, I understand the legal elements that are putting it, that are allowing us to do this, but I still think the optics are always of great concern to me, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the intention? If we have a joint session, is the intention then to place this item back on our agenda that evening? Is that your plan?
I'm not asking for that. Well, I'm sorry, the chair can do what he and will do what he has discretion to do.
Okay.
But that's not part of my, as far as I'm concerned, the only purpose, and my only objective here is to have a, an executive session where this board is fully apprised of what's in the offers.
And I was, and I'm supporting the executive session under the fact that all members of
the both boards or that can attend will get the same information at the same amount of time, so staff doesn't have to duplicate anything, and that we take that information and we figure out what the following steps are, you know, from there. I'm, I'm more comfortable in that manner. So we have a motion, we have a second further discussion. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metz will say aye. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Item D, electric vehicle EV public charging station policy.
I want to be clear, we're still going to have our meeting on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Let's make sure that's clear here. Excuse me, we're still going to have our Board of Housing Trust meeting on Monday.
So that was my question today.
Yes, we're still going to have that meeting. Yes.
Okay, so executive session that day, Affordable Housing Trust.
Then with a choice, yes, on Tuesday.
Joy. Okay.
Okay. No, Terry, no, Terry, go ahead.
You're not finished?
No.
Just tell me when you're ready.
Terry, vote yes.
Well, hopefully we'll...
For what this is worth, I think if we can categorize this as a first draft discussion, so just a little ease.
Lightly.
Yes.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully this is more straightforward.
Put a perspective.
So again, Terry Whalen, well, I didn't say, I didn't introduce myself. I will introduce myself now, Terry Whalen, Principal of Projects and Operations Administrator. And in your package, you do have a staff report and some additional information attached. But I'm going to just, I put this quick slide presentation together to kind of hit some of the high points of, again, what really is intended to be a broad, broad policy. And again, the background this really comes from, with public EV, public charging stations and projects underway and planned in Chatham, there's a need to establish a broad policy covering the multiple management aspects. And I just want to point out, thanks to Kathy and Katie, the Town Manager's Executive Assistant, and Katie, the Community Development Director, conducted in putting together aspects of this presentation that are helping inform the policy that we're putting forward here for potential approval. We just have some information here on, so building on that point, I hopefully got across that, you know, we're imminently moving into the public charging realm, and Katie can speak on some more details here, but we have a great infographic here on the charging aspects of the Chatham Eldridge Garage redevelopment, the parking lot, and some of the charging components of that. And again, also just for, maybe a refresher for some, as we've talked on not only this proposal, but the proposal that'll be going for Town Meeting for the Airport Commission. So we've got a mix of Level 2 and Level 3, or in this instance, Level 3 and Level 2, depending on which way you want to look at it. But, so again, the Level 3s are the faster charging items to stations, and then the Level 2s are the, within the one to six hour range.
I got to ask a question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
But why would you, why do you then bother with a Level 2? Why would you bother?
The costs are pretty dramatically different, and the...
Okay, I just don't know enough about...
And the subsidies.
Okay, thanks.
Just one other question. While you have those, the names down below, I take it, are the vendors that are...
Sure, that's part, that's the team for the Eldridge Garage Project.
Okay. And are they all local, some of them local? How does that work?
Yeah, so, you know, Catalyst is a Cape firm. They've presented before. One of the reps from Red Moore has a summer home in Chatham, or a visitor, I forget exactly. Olmstead Design, who we work with, also Jay Olmstead's firm, and then Weston and Sampson, who we work with routinely.
Thank you.
So, you know, a team definitely versed with, you know, or well-versed in the local conditions here in Chatham. So, again, just really, the purpose of this proposed policy is to, again, to create this management framework to operate, maintain, and recover costs associated with owning EV public charging stations that are made available to the public, to charge their own personal electronic, excuse, electric vehicles, covering the aspects, including what the policy will do, will establish the authority to set and collect fees, implementing a fair and equitable fee schedule, setting operation parameters, and enable enforcement. And really, just, you know, when it brought, again, I pointed out in the staff report, but just looking at it again, even in the context of a couple other documents, and just really pointing out that these provision of public charging stations just really do support the town's commitment to environmental conservation, coastal resiliency, and natural resources goal, that the Select Board has articulated, where they mentioned decarbonization initiatives, and the Energy and Climate Action Committee's roadmap area of attention, also focusing on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So, and here, just again, some mechanics of what goes into, you know, setting a fee. Basically, the fees we looked at, and Kathy did a great job of canvassing communities around the Commonwealth, the bulk of the communities use the dollar per kilowatt-hour approach. That's what we're proposing here, that we would set a fee according to that. You know, like any business venture or enterprise, we've been looking at the inputs, the town cost to supply electricity, any payment or processing fees for these stations are Wi-Fi linked to accounting programs. There are some costs with maintaining network licenses and then maintenance and warranty agreements. So all of those items are, need to be factored in here into the development of a fee so that it can be structured to recover some, some of the costs. And the policy also will provide the ability to post operating policies, or primarily signs, for limitations on EV parking, other restrictions, and charging duration. So here, we just have some examples of signage that tries to get at some of those parameters. So there's a lot of different examples, so we can formalize that. Also, on the far right, as you're looking at the screen, have the blue, you know, a directional awayfinding signage might be something we also want to consider. In addition to, many of the, the vendors have apps where you can search online, but maybe if you were just driving around as well, might be helpful to have some wayfinding signage as well. So we've seen a couple of examples of, you know, not only signage related to the operational parameters, but wayfinding signage, or even, even different descriptive signage with letters directing folks to charging stations. We did have a conversation via email, anyway, with Chief Anderson regarding enforcement aspects, that, and they're, they're looking into ways to integrate this into the new electronic parking ticket system. Right now, they know they can definitely do it using another category, but they're working to see to get this, that they can get a charging violation element into the system. So more to come on that, but the chief also pointed out, might want to consider a tow away at the owner's expense option. And then those signs I showed you earlier, he also reminded us that any sign that indicates violation has to, has the, must include the fine amount. So that, that's something, again, I believe, that might have came up in the discussion with, when they were talking about the system and the stickers they've been putting on, the no parking signs throughout town. So really, the next steps here, and again, this is really, you know, again, intended to be the first step, the introductory policy, setting our frameworks so that we can develop a proposed fee schedule, set parameters for Chatham-specific signs, and then monitor implementation. So as this is a new venture or enterprise, again, envisioning there might be, you know, based on use or other parameters, competition, locations, sites, you know, we might want to be creative with different rates at different locations, different types of models as we move forward. So again, the policy is really intended to be flexible so that we can, you know, adopt a fee schedule or schedules, depending on locations and different parameters as we move forward.
Question, like, in a situation with, like, the Eldridge Garage, where they know we've identified EV stations down there, and if we do the charging, we have, you know, collection pop program we put together, there will be, I would assume there'll be some kind of notification saying, hey, you know, your car's ready to charge. Or I think, I understand some of the cars themselves actually tell you, hey, I'm charged. I mean, the technology out there is crazy. But in a situation with that, would we want to discuss with the valet service about if someone were charging a car, probably they're going to go shopping, dining, whatever, would we then have the valet relocated out of the charging area into a parking space as part of a service, separate from what we're charging? I mean, there's some, there's some elements that we could play with. I mean, I honestly, places like the Fish Pier, they're going to be a dedicated spot, or if we have a downtown location, dedicated spot, community center, dedicated spot. But in a situation with Eldridge Garage, are we going to have to have some, you know, discussions with the vendor about how that interacts with their business?
I think it's a great point, but I think I'll defer to Katie on that, and she's the, got the most experience with that aspect of that contract, or how that, where that might go.
Sure, thank you. So my suggestion would be that we have a conversation with the parking service manager about what their comfort level is. My understanding is that they really haven't been doing as much valet recently, only because once, or during COVID, they were not getting in people's cars. So I think they've been more directing people. And then, again, you know, they may get back into valet, but we are actually going out for, again, for an RFP for Parking Management Services. My assumption is that Chatham Valet will apply, but I don't know that they will, will be the, will be the, you know, chosen vendor, so.
Do you have a date on when that RFP is going out? Because I heard they're interested.
Yes, and, yes, it's advertised for next Monday, April 29th. The expectation is that the parking, or the building, the construction will be done at the end of May, beginning of June, and so there, we're expecting that we would execute an agreement sometime by the middle of June for services for this coming summer.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Terry. I think, you know, in looking at, this is a new project for Chatham, and we're not sure of all the nuances that you had suggested, that whatever we do, it's consistent across the board. There's no, like, subtle parking fees difference anywhere, or any signage difference. The signs, even seeing those three different signs, I was like, ugh, too many signs, you know, that they're consistent. But I think we should keep it as simple as possible going forward until we get a better understanding of how flexible we can be, what are the demands of the consumers, and, you know, who's using it. I mean, I, I heard from one of our citizens today that they felt that this was just going to be for visitors and second homeowners. Quite frankly, we have, you know, we have people that work downtown, and they're going to want to be utilizing that, these areas as well. So I find that that's, you know, maybe not as true as was being presented, so, simple. Keep it simple.
Yeah, that, I guess, maybe if I can, I just, I was pointing out that there is flexibility if we move in a continuum and a broader parking scheme or management, or you find that we want to charge, you know, different rates, different times, at different locations to impact, so that it doesn't preclude that. So that was something that after, you know, we did bounces off the ECAC, again, as something that we might want to look, the Energy and Climate Action Committee, sorry, you know, for something to consider. So that, we wrote that the policy so it doesn't preclude kind of creative fee structures.
And the parking...
But again, those would be based on experience, is what we're seeing.
And the Parking Committee Working Group, is that still in existence, and have they weighed in? You haven't met in a while, but I would imagine... weighed in? You haven't met in a while, but I would imagine you'd-
We're waiting for the report back from Kamesh.
Okay, so-
Katie has the update on that.
Okay, yes. Actually, I had a meeting late last week and I was going to be reaching out to the Parking Schalus, Parking Schalus and Jordan Group to set up a next meeting in the next month.
I, I would like to hear from them before we weigh in.
Can this be included in the, in the, on that agenda?
We could include this on that agenda, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just, Terry, I, I know this is a first reading for us and we're going, we're obviously going to get some additional information from the working group. I, I just had a suggested addition under the policy on page two, the items that, the matters that the, I guess the town manager would be considering when she establishes the fee schedule in the fourth line where it says network licenses at the end. I would add other operating or maintenance costs incurred to, incurred by the town, not just those that relate to the agreements.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I don't know, I can't read my notes. There was a question asked by a citizen at the very beginning. I had thirty percent EV in some kind of scribble. There was a question that was going to, we were going to ask you that was asked earlier in this evening. Do you recall?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't catch that question as I was coming in as the-
Well, that person's in the room still, so.
Would you like to step up and reiterate your question? So like, that way we can cut the translation part of it out.
Rather than-
Yes.
All right. The electric cars are thirty percent heavier than their gas counterparts. And I was, so they put thirty percent more wear and tear on our infrastructure. And then we have an eleven million dollar bridge. So I was kind of wondering if we're going to put a tax on that to compensate for the wear and tear.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I don't really have an answer to that, not understanding what authority the town may have to do that.
Let me help you. I, I think that may come within the, the confines of the suggestion that Dean made, which is other operating costs. I mean, you're going to take a look and see if there are, whether it's depreciation, infrastructure, maintenance, whatever that, that, you know, we're aware of and can quantify and that goes into the, the costing.
Great. So that's a great way to cover that for consideration.
Additional thoughts at the moment?
Just a couple. I mean, do we have any idea how many total charging stations we'd like to have in the town of Chatham? Do, do we pay for them? We get grants to pay for them, I think, of what I've heard in the past, the recent past, especially across the street potentially. Is that a fair statement or not? And?
Yeah, I think, and I tried to relay in the staff reports, so again, not to speak for the, the ECAC, Energy and Climate Action Committee, but they also did talk about the need for a plan. So, you know, of having a more format. And again, in my, you know, and I'll defer to Katie as well. Again, I think there's some natural synergies with the, the Parking Working Solution Group looking at that. You know, we have some locations that we've identified, but, you know, as we go forward, as technology changes or the market changes, you know, we, we might need to, I, I think the, the key word here is flexibility and openness to, to progress.
It's my understanding, though, that Eldridge Garage would have one or two or three or whatever, right?
Three, right?
Yes, we have. Katie can-
So there's actually six units. There's two level twos that each have two ports that can charge, so they can charge two cars apiece. The level threes, there's four of those. They can only charge one car at a time. They're just, they're, they're, they're bigger to, there's, you know, more inner workings for the, the fast charging.
Essentially, eight vehicles could be charged.
Eight, eight vehicles.
We have the, the requisite conduit and the electricity service there and everything?
It's all-
That was all part of the, built into the design. So again, as the concept was approved with EV charging, that was all part of the design.
That dream team is extremely prescient.
Okay. Any questions at this stage? All right. Well, thank you for the update.
Okay. And we'll, I guess we'll make that revision as, as suggested and we will continue with follow-up readings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Get my right paper. All right. We have appointments. I'm going to start with Council on Aging Board of Directors. I'll entertain a motion. We have actually only one candidate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
We recently interviewed Ann Ryan. I move to appoint Ann Ryan as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors until June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint Jonathan Avery as a member at large on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees until June thirty, twenty twenty five, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Other nominations for the, for the open seat? Seeing none. We have one, one nomination for Jonathan Avery. All, all those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye, which I believe negates the, well, I don't, I believe the, Mr. Avery was only looking for one position, so it negates the Conservation Commission. And I explained earlier about ECON. So, all right, with that, I will entertain one very last motion of the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.